Okay. Was that on the record? Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. It's May 13, 2010. We are conducting one more budget study session. This is session numbered number five, and this is concerning Glendale Water and Power. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Graham.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
You report? Do you have a report?
Well, this was posted on May 6, the notice for this meeting on 2010.
I see.
Outside the Bolton Board outside City Hall.
Okay. Very good.
And the item is the Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding Glendale Water and Power.
Okay. Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. This is budget study session number five in your series of budget study sessions to put together, the budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2010-11 for the city. The last study session, you reviewed non-general fund activities, funds, and had presentations from a number of departments. Today, we devoted this entire budget study session for as long as you would like to take to go through the information, a presentation by Glendale Water and Power on its budgets. With that, Glenn Steiger, General Manager.
Mr. Steiger.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck. Mayor Najarian, members of the Glendale City Council. I am pleased today to offer an overview and budget summary of your utility, which currently is reliable, progressive, and in relatively good financial health. That being said, however, I will also show within the scope of the presentation how certain factors are impacting our ability to remain in that position longer term. And the major factors we're seeing are overall economic conditions, weather conditions, believe it or not, and regulatory pressures, increasing regulatory pressures on us as both an electric and water utility. So that being said, what I'd like to do is give you a quick overview of where we are in general, and then get to our budget considerations, and then also look at some comparisons with us to some of our surrounding municipal neighbors, and also look at rates in terms of relative position of GWP, both electric and water. So first, I'm going to just review quickly our overall strategic plan, because the strategic plan up till this point is the driving force in everything we do at GWP. So I just want to remind you where we are with our vision values, mission vision values, then go into where we are in terms of this fiscal year, our results, our projected results for the year, our upcoming 10-11 O and M expense budget, our correlating 10-11 capital project budget, review a couple of key projects over the last year and moving forward into the next year or so that are driving a good portion of the capital expenditure for GWP, review quickly our public benefits fund, talk a little bit about the comparative information as I just mentioned, and then talk about some of the future challenges and impacts. Our mission, to be your trusted community utility, which is now part of our logo, our vision, to deliver reliable, high-quality, environmentally sensitive, and sustainable water and power services to our customers in a caring and cost-competitive manner while creating a stimulating and rewarding work experience for employees. Our values, which have become a critical part of all of how we operate, including our employee evaluations, dedication to customer service, trustworthy and respectful, ownership, and ownership means that we all own what we do within the framework of GWP, teamwork, doing it right, and continuous improvement. If you recall, when we did the original strategic plan, we said that we would put forth a quarterly scoreboard, which we do on a regular basis every quarter, along with a complete report overview of everything we're doing at GWP. This is the latest scoreboard, and I'm not going to go through it piece by piece. I'll just pick out a couple of notable pieces in there. And the first thing I want to mention, as we go through this, you'll notice most of our scoreboard is in the yellow condition, which means we're on schedule, which means we're where we expect it to be. Couple cases are green, and a couple cases are red. The green's ahead of schedule, and we've taken a very conservative approach. In many cases where we show yellow, we're actually probably a little bit ahead, but we tend to say we're on schedule. And we do have a couple of areas where we are behind schedule, and I'll indicate that to you. But underwater supply, for example, as of the end of the first quarter of this year, we are on target to produce the additional 3,800 acre-feet from Verdugo Basin with the establishment of two additional wells. So that's an important piece of that. Under power supply, achieving a balanced energy portfolio is critical to us in that it balances between our own internal generation, our purchased power, and our renewable power. And we've made great strides in all three of those areas over the last year. So again, we're on schedule in that area. In customer service, one of the areas that we were able to put in play over the last year, and in fact, if you notice, there's a hole, because we've finished it. As of December '09, we've concluded with the fact that we now have additional ways notifying our customers on outage issues, on emergency issues, with our mass notification system. GWP put the mass notification system in place, developed it, and interestingly, I think the city at this point has used it more than GWP has over the last year, because there's been so many unusual conditions where it's been necessary. So that's been a great benefit both to GWP and the city. Under rates, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about rates later on, but I think it's important to understand that we've put forth our biggest single stretch goal under this area, because it is probably the most important piece of what we do, and that is to reduce our electrical rates to 35 percent below our neighboring investor-owned utility. We are making great strides in that area. We reduced rates by 9 percent at the beginning of this year, and we've made more progress since that time towards reducing it again, probably later this year. And that's in certain areas where we've mentioned in the past that have been creating upward pressure on rates in electric. But we'll talk a little bit more about where we need to go in the future. Water rates, we are clearly well below 80 percent of the average rates, and again, I'll show you that as we move forward. Under power infrastructure, we are, and I'll talk about one of our larger projects, a conversion of one of our substations, the Glorieta Substation, but that is in the area of upgrading our transmission system to 69 KV, which will greatly enhance reliability in the Glorieta area and in the Montrose-Lacrescena area. And we are on schedule, actually, we're probably a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're on schedule there. And just to show you that we still have some ways to go, those are reds, hard to see the red, but those are red indications, which means we're actually behind there. And one of the areas where we are behind is in preventable vehicle accidents, and that seems to be an issue that we are continuing to work on. Again, whoop, we went the other, we're going the wrong way here. That's it. I think I already talked about that. Under systems, we are currently revising some of our initiatives in this strategic plan, and one of those is the one under 8.1, achieve 100 percent AMI meter saturation. Essentially, that's our smart grid. If you notice, we originally had said 2013. Our entire smart grid, both electric and water saturation in terms of smart grid, will be completely implemented and in service by September or October of 2011. We've greatly accelerated that, so we are, as you can see, ahead of schedule there. We are working diligently to create improved communications with our customers, city council, yourselves, other city departments. I think we've made strides sometimes, sometimes we haven't, as you can see, it's an ongoing effort for us, but one of critical importance. And then...
Mr. Quintero.
Mr. Steiger. Let me just ask you a quick question. On the 100 percent meter saturation throughout the entire city?
Yes. Entire city. Approximately 85,000 electric meters and 35,000 water meters will be completely changed out by, let's say, September of 2011, including the platforms that they speak to, known as the meter data management system, that will completely be in place and operable by then.
That'll include commercial accounts?
Yes. Everything.
Okay.
And then finally, on the legislative and regulatory front, we've been very conservative here and said we're on schedule, we're probably way ahead of schedule here in terms of our strategy. We talked about putting together a legislative and regulatory strategy. When we first put the strategic plan together, we have done that, we've put the resources in place, and made very, very good progress in having GWP's issues put forth in the right arenas, both legislative and regulatory, for major issues that are affecting us. One, of course, is the AB 32 greenhouse gas initiative, but many, many others, so we've made good strides there. Now let me go into some of the numbers here. This is our projected year-end results for GWP. And as you can see, we expect about $190 million of revenue in the electric side, about $38 million on the water side, for a total of about $228. And again, this is a projection based on the first nine months of this year, but we think we're pretty close. With operating expenses of $169, almost $170 million electric, say $34 million on water, total of about $204 million here, the transfer at $19 million, $4 million, for a total of about a $23 million transfer. These are our totals here. However, I think the thing to notice is our total net income is quite marginal at this point. We're at $1.2 million on the electric side, just barely positive on the water side, for a total of about $1.5 million total. And of course, that may go up or down depending upon how the year-end actually works out. And I'm going to talk a little bit, as I move through this presentation, of why that is and what's affecting us. I mentioned upfront that we've had some issues, but you'll see it as we move on. But to put it in perspective, I'd like to show you where we are in terms of our total. As I mentioned, we have almost 85,000 to bet, 84,000 total electric meters as we move ahead from '07, '08 all the way through this year. It's been relatively flat. There's not a lot of new growth here in Glendale. I think we know that, and it's pretty much built out. But I think the thing to note that's very, very important, which separates us from some of our neighbors, is the percentage split between residential, commercial, industrial. 85 percent of our customers are residential. That's relatively high. That's a skewed number for many municipal systems. And again, as we move ahead through this presentation, I'll show you how that affects our expenditures and our proportion in terms of transfers and things like that. So I think this is a, keep in mind, 85 percent of all of our electric customers are residential. Now, for fiscal year 2010, our revenue is primarily on the retail side, as you would expect, a little over 90 percent of all of our revenue is through retail sales. About 5 percent is wholesale. We get about 1 percent from interest. We've got a minor piece of other grants and so on, and then capital contributions, which are down. Capital contributions are the dollars that customers pay for new services, extensions, and so on. And so these numbers are down. In fact, all of our numbers are down this year to 190. But this is the breakout of where our revenues actually come from. Our expenses, the majority of our expenses are production, and that generally is broken up into natural gas purchases, purchase power on the open market, long-term contracts, and anything else that would go to produce the kilowatt-hours that we finally serve to our customers. So as you can see, 62 percent of our entire expense is production-related. T and D is about 11 percent, customer service about 4 percent, depreciation on our assets about 10, interest 3, and the transfer is about 10 percent of the total. So this is where our expenses are on the electric side. Our sources, generally speaking, I have a more detailed slide, but jointly governed organizations, that's basically through SCAPPA. And as you're aware, much of our renewable and some other large-scale contracts come through SCAPPA. It's a very, very beneficial organization for us to be part of. Purchase power in generals, about 28 percent, and then our own facilities here in Glendale are 14 percent, which admittedly is low, given the potential that we could have if, in fact, our units were more efficient. They're older, they're less efficient, and one of the issues we have is how do we make them more efficient so that we can run them more? To break it down just a little bit more, and I find this, I think this is a very interesting slide. This will show you where, what our sources are, what our resources are. As you can see, natural gas is about 28, 29 percent, renewables are just under 23 percent, coal is 34 percent, and the 34 percent of coal, while it's not extraordinarily large, is our primary source of greenhouse gas emissions and is the one part of our portfolio that we have to look at long-term in terms of mitigating the emissions from that. We have about 6.5 percent nuclear, not here in Glendale, obviously, but we have a part of the Palaverdick Plant in Arizona, and then about 8.2 are purchases. Now, this is where our renewables come from. We have 1.6 percent geothermal, 6.8 biomass, which is landfill gas, small hydro is 1.7, large hydro 4.7, wind, which is our largest single piece right now, and probably we've more or less maxed out the amount of wind, and I'll show you, we have a little bit more potential there, too, is 7.7, and solar is at this point just 0.1. And that's probably an area, as we move forward over the next few years, we'll probably want to take a harder look at bringing in additional solar. But an interesting corollary is what we've done in the last few months to add to our potential portfolio when we need it, if we need it. And at 23 percent right now, we're in pretty good shape, so we don't need additional renewables right now. So we have joint contracts with our neighbors in Los Angeles for additional renewables where we have options. So the options would give us a total of additional 6.6 percent or 29 percent, close to 30 percent of renewable, when we need it.
Take a pause just a moment.
I'm sorry?
No, I just wanted you to let the public know so there's no misunderstanding that we have coal there at the Grayson Plant. Why don't you let them know where the coal plants are?
The coal plants are, we have two coal plants that we own interest in. One is the Intermountain Power Project in Utah, which is where we have the majority of our coal, and the other is at the San Juan Coal Plant in New Mexico at Four Corners. So between those two, those are our coal resources. These options, though, give us the potential, if we need it, over the next three years to bring on additional renewables, or if we don't, to just lay it off.
Mr. Steiger, on a completely unrelated note, but on a matter of great significance to the city and to the residents and perhaps to the whole region, I just received word from Chief DePampa that the missing young lady has been located alive and well in Merced, California, and the police department is currently in the process of arranging for her immediate return to Glendale to sort what happened. So there appears to be, she appears to be in good health, and we'll find out what happened, but it did, due to the huge amount of news, media, and interest and stories that were generated, shedding our safety and other, your brother department, if you will, the police department, and the entire community in general, in a not-so-endearing light, we're happy to say, I think we're all relieved on the count. I heard a sigh just a few moments ago when we all read this email that she has been found, and she's alive and well.
Very good.
Back to your, back to regularly programmed budget study session.
Yeah, this is kind of anticlimactic to that, but I'll take that. That's fine. You're back to coal. Well, we've kind of come past coal and back to this, and I just want to emphasize the importance of these options that we can either take or not take. We have the option for the next three years at a fixed cost that we've already negotiated, so this is a very, very beneficial piece, augmenting what we already have. So I'm very, very pleased to say that I think our contracts group has done a wonderful job of positioning us in the renewable area. This will give you a pretty good idea of what our production trend in terms of how many kilowatt-hours are we actually producing and selling to our customer base. And the thing I think that's pretty obvious is it's dropped down over the course of the last two years. There's really a few reasons for that. Obviously, the economy has had some impact. This, however, this fairly significant drop between here is not only due to the economy, it's due to weather. GWP's electric utility gets most of its revenue, actually, in the summer months when the weather is hot, people use more air conditioning, so our units run more. Last year, that wasn't the case. Last year, it was not that hot, if you recall, the weather was relatively mild, and this is a direct result of that.
I have a question, Ms. Friedman.
Yeah, is any of that, you think, due to conservation and people upgrading to smart and to more efficient appliances, that sort of thing?
Some of it is.
How much of that, do you think, is attributable to that?
I actually have a chart to show you, but it's about 1 percent.
Sorry for getting ahead of you.
It's okay. No, I'm glad you asked. It's about 1 percent, but I'll show you how that works. So the answer is yes, and we've been very, very fortunate in Glendale. Our customers do a good job with that. So it shows you where we are, but it also shows you the drop in usage, drop and the correlating drop in revenue, too. On the water side, again, our residential customers make up about 88 percent of total. Roughly 29,000 of the 33,000 are residential, with a much smaller number being commercial, industrial, and then, you can see, are recycled and miscellaneous fire services and so on. On the water side, again, potable water sales make up 90 percent of the total revenue source for water. Recycled is about 4 percent, interest income about 1 percent, grants and other revenue about 4 percent, and then capital contributions, again, that amount of money that's paid by customers generally when they want to put in new services, about another 1 percent. But again, the majority, the lion's share of sales is potable water. Expenses, similar to electric, not quite as pronounced, however, is production. Production still is over 50 percent, 52 percent, and production is primarily what we paid to Metropolitan Water District for water and the cost to run our own wells. So most of it's in production. 16 percent is in transmission, which is the pipes and so on within the city to maintain that. Customer service is another 6 percent, appreciation 9 percent, interest 6 percent, and then the transfer on the water side's about 11 percent. Now here's the conundrum, and the conundrum is this. As you can see, the volume of water has gone down, and primarily because of conservation. In this case, it's conservation, a little bit of weather in there, too, same kind of thing. And our customers have reacted very, very well to our request, and of course, we've also made it mandatory to reduce water. We asked for 10 percent, they gave us far more than 10 percent. From a water standpoint, from a conservation and efficiency standpoint, it's really, really a good thing. From a revenue standpoint, it's not been a very good thing, and again, I'll show you what that means to us later on, but keep in mind, when we talk about a reduction in water sales because of conservation, there is a correlating reduction in revenue. And this pictorial shows you exactly how that looks in terms of declining sales over time, and both in '08 and '09, where we asked for a voluntary cut in water, where people did respond, and then here, where we mandated it, you can see we've had a pretty good drop off in water sales. This is where the water comes from. Metropolitan water, at this point, serves roughly 56 percent of all of our water needs. Our own local groundwater is about 38 percent, and that's a slight increase over time. We've been actually doing a little bit better with our balancing in terms of our own water versus met. Then finally, recycled is about 6 percent, and we have brought in front of yourselves and also our commission, a plan to expand the recycled water system when the time is On the water supply side, you can see that we've done a pretty good job of increasing our own, this is the bottom orangey-brown piece here, is our own supply. The blue is met, and then the top greenish is recycled water. And as you can see, our goal is to maximize our own internal water supply and bring down as much as we can our dependence on met, and we're doing that, and we're doing it pretty well. So that's what this is meant to show. Okay, so now, we're going to talk about our budget for the coming year, and this is where we're starting to feel fairly intensely the effects of the economy, and I'll show you how that's working with us, the effects, to a degree, of changing weather patterns, and some of the other commitments that we've made through our strategic plan. So let me go through this with you here. Our budget for '09 was, on the electric side, was $230 million. We actually spent $216 million in '09. In '10, we had expected to receive $247 million in revenue. However, the reality of it, due to economic conditions, weather conditions, and so on, is that our revenues on the electric side will only be $190 million, quite a bit lower than we've seen in the last few years, and of course, in our budget projections also. So with that in mind, our preliminary projection for '11, which seems illogical at the moment, is $233 million. Now, do we expect sales to increase by that much? And the answer is no, we don't. We do expect a slight increase, a slight uptick in sales. We do have a couple of larger customers coming on, and the economy has more or less bottomed out when it comes to electric sales. We're seeing a difference. However, the biggest difference here is in our wholesale, our wholesale revenues. This year, because the overall wholesale market pretty much dried up for us, we were not able to get the wholesale revenues that we expected. Next year, we have a different operating philosophy. We see the market a little bit differently, and we understand it better, so we believe that our wholesale market, our wholesale revenues will go up. So we see an increase in wholesale, a bit of an increase in retail, not extreme, and so we're fairly confident that our revenues for next year will be closer to that. With operating expenses at $204 million versus $169, again, most of those are in the wholesale area. If we were to strip that away, you'd see that our operating expenses on T and D and our normal daily operating is pretty much flat. And for this year, in order to be able to balance off the $190 million in revenue, we cut back on the electric side. We got rid of all of our outside contractors on the T and D side. We substantially cut back overtime, discretionary overtime essentially was eliminated. So we've made major cuts, and we're doing okay in order to be able to match the reduction in revenue. General funds transfer remains at $19.1 million. So our total expenses in transfer for this year are $189, and as I mentioned earlier, with a total net income of 1.2. Now, let me go over to next year, whoop, yeah, and just discuss this for a minute. Because we'll have increases in wholesale, revenue will have correlating increases in expenses associated with that, and so that's why this number is at 223. And we'll also have an increase in revenue, and we've already set the stage for next year in the increase in revenue by doing something that I think is quite innovative, very, very good, as you can see. As you can see, it's made a nice increase in our income for next year. And that is, we have been able to temporarily sell some of our renewable credits, because I mentioned to you earlier, we have a very, very healthy renewable portfolio. And for the moment, we're way ahead of any renewable standard that would be applied to us, plus we're way ahead of our own internal renewable standard. So we have taken, for the next year, certain renewable credits, sold them on the market, and net result is, when all is said and done, we'll have an extra $5 million just from selling those credits for next year. So that's been a big, big help to our budget. Plus, we also expect, in the wholesale market, to net an additional $3 or $4 million in wholesale revenue. So that's why this number is 10 versus only $1.2 for this year.
Just a moment.
Mr. Steiger and Lester, strategic business reasons for not wanting to go public with it. Can you give us a little more detail on the wholesale revenues?
Sure. Sure. What we do, along with having renewable energy, and we're very fortunate that we have our own renewable energy. For example, the Shoal landfill gas, now that we own it, is completely ours to do with as we please. And I showed you, that's about 6% or 7% of our total renewable. There are renewable credits that have a value, that go with that, that can be sold on the open market. And so what we've done is we've sold those credits, along with the energy, and we've replaced that energy with much lower-cost energy for next year. The difference between the energy that we sold, along with the renewable credit, and what it's costing us to replace that energy for next year is about a net $5 million. What it means, though, just so we're all aware of it, it means that for next year, instead of having a 23% renewable portfolio, we'll have a 20%. It still puts us much ahead of where we are. And given the fact that the economic conditions were in, we felt that was a very beneficial transaction for GWP.
But in reality, it's 23.
In reality, we still, yeah, we have 23.
We're selling those right, that surplus to, who do we sell it to?
Other. In this case, we sold it to Pasadena.
But only for one year?
For one year.
So the following year, they're ours again?
Yeah, they come back to us. And we don't lose anybody.
And what's the net, in other words, how much do we get for each percent versus what it costs us to?
Percent?
Is it, in other words, is it more profitable to obtain the sustainable energy, the renewable energy, and then buy it essentially at wholesale and retail it to Pasadena? Or to just forego obtaining that renewable and not worry about the income from Pasadena?
Well, currently, the cost of non-renewable energy is lower.
Right.
Renewable energy.
Right.
So, you know, if we just only had non-renewable, it would cost us less. So when we have renewable energy, any renewable that we have also has credits associated with it, and there's a market for those credits. So theoretically, if we wanted, let's say we only had 10% renewable, and we needed to get to 15%, we could go and do the same thing in reverse. We could go out and buy the credits, and it would cost us $5 million or $10 million to get the credits, rather than having to go out and actually develop a contract for renewable energy, because it's not that easy or quick to do.
I understand that, but I'm comparing the values between them. Is Pasadena making a business decision that it's cheaper to buy the credits from us rather than to seek their own renewables?
It's more expedient. It's a timing issue. They need it quicker than they can go out and get renewable energy. It's a timing issue.
We're in better shape.
Yes, very much so. So it's more of a timing issue than it is an actual issue of cheaper or less, you know, or more expensive on the market.
Would it behoove us, then, to obtain renewable energy sources? Up to what cost would it make it logical for us to obtain renewable energy sources in light of what the credits can be sold for? Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Right about where we are now. That's why we made this decision.
So we're about at the equilibrium?
Pretty much, yeah. If we went out into the market now and developed more renewable, it would be pretty much a net zero to buy it and then resell.
Okay.
Now I understand, yes.
That's where I'm at.
Okay.
My question is, looking at the last three years of projected versus actual budgets, we have had a higher projected budget than actual, I'm sorry, revenues, not budget. We've had higher projected revenues than actual revenues.
Yes.
So when you say that you're confident that next year will be the revenues that you're projecting, given that we've fallen short for the past couple of years, how can we be so confident?
Because the wholesale market will be different next year, and our ability to work the wholesale market will be different. However, that being said, if I were to differentiate between the wholesale numbers here and our retail numbers, our retail numbers for next year are pretty much flat. So if I take the wholesale out of there, the retail looks pretty much like it did this year, a little bit more, that's all. However, you have to understand that if we reduce revenues by, let's say, $20 million on the wholesale side, there's almost a corresponding reduction in expenses, too. So it's an almost, not quite, almost net zero.
I was going to point out the same thing on the total revenue side, and part of the cause of the fluctuation between budget and actuals in the total revenue numbers also are fuel adjustment costs, which can vary substantially from what you may predict at the beginning of the year to what natural gas prices may actually be by the end of the year. And that's why you'll see large variations, fluctuations in the operating expenses as well. So it's not as if your revenues are down, but your expenses remain up, because expenses also include the cost, for example, of natural gas.
Thank you.
Mr. Terrance? Make the assumption that, in fact, the renewable energy portfolio, it's sort of the non-renewable, we're really relying on natural gas, is that correct?
For the most part, yes.
Which is a clean, efficient fuel.
It's that, and plus, for the longer-term projections now are that it will remain relatively low for the longer term. Now, of course, natural gas has a history of being very volatile, and that could change tomorrow. But everything we see says right now that natural gas will be relatively stable for the next four or five years.
Well, a lot of the shale discoveries, I think that alone is going to keep the market at a low.
That's what's doing, isn't it?
Friedman?
Does our solar portfolio include residential, who are generating more power than they can use, and so it goes back into the grid? Do we do that here?
We actually do, yes.
So does that include that number?
It does.
So the more residential customers we have that have solar, the higher our renewable portfolio becomes? Do we get to include their solar that's powering their house in our renewable platform, even if it doesn't come back into the grid?
We do, we do. However, depending, you know, if a customer specifically requests that they want the credits for it, they can keep those credits. Now, residential customer, there's no benefit to them. But as we move forward, and we get more aggressive with solar, which we will, particularly on larger-scale installations, again, like we did at the college, where we did the parking structure, there's a lot of potential here in Glendale for more of that. We will probably see more interest in certain customers wanting to keep those credits for themselves, especially if they put in the solar units. So it can go either way.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
So this will give you an idea, again, of the differences, you know, what's occurred, just to kind of give you a snapshot of what's happened in between budgeted and forecasted revenue. And again, on retail revenue, the difference there being economic and weather, as I mentioned Economic conditions, for the most part, really did affect us on both retail revenue and non-operating revenue here. Adjustable also in here, same issue. And again, we did have a decrease in fuel costs over the year, so that would, by definition, reduce this. But it also reduces our expenses, as Mr. Starbird mentioned. And then on the wholesale piece, this is the big piece that I mentioned earlier. This is really where we took a step backwards this year, and then we'll readjust for next year. So this just gives you a snapshot of the differences in the various segments of our overall revenue picture. On the water side, this is the difference between our forecast, $38 million versus $44 million. This budget was put in place before we had mandatory water restrictions. So this is a direct result, this difference right here, is a direct result of our customers doing what we asked them to do. Very, very good. They reduced far more than 10%. Excellent. Unfortunately, it hurt our revenues quite a bit. We were able to get through this year due to reserves on our adjustable side. So we're still in the positive, just barely, for this year. Now, I want to mention this. Last year, we showed a potential negative in the budget, and that was due primarily to a loss of our grant for the Chrome 6 plant. You may recall, last year, we lost that grant temporarily. We have petitioned for it, and it's been restored. So that has, that's one of the reasons why you no longer see a negative in this area here. But we are very, very tight, even this year, with where we are in terms of revenues. But what it does pretend for the future, the very near future, is in order for us to have a positive net value, margin, for next year, we most likely, well, not most, we will have to talk about some type of rate adjustment. And it's unfortunate, because it's a function of people doing what we've asked them to do and use less, but it also reduces our, particularly, our base rate revenues. So this number here is a function of a rate increase being put in place. Without a rate increase, we will definitely be in the negative for this coming year.
I'm assuming, though, that if people are reducing their water usage and learning how to reduce their water usage and maybe taking advantage of the incentives that we give for people to upgrade and remove lawns and that sort of thing, that they, in effect, would have a decrease in their water bill because they're using less water. So we're not talking about a rate increase necessarily translating to a higher water bill for people. I think it's important that we keep that in mind as we talk about this.
Our goal, our goal is to do that very thing, to ultimately look at the bill and not the price per unit. That's what you're saying.
And my other question is, just in general, what does a gallon of tap water cost? Just so people have that in their.
A gallon? I'm going to ask Peter to answer that.
Maybe that's a bad measure.
A gallon.
Off the top of my head, I would say $0.3.
Versus a buck ninety-five in the store.
Right.
But, no, your point is correct. That's our goal, is to, at worst possible case, keep the bill exactly what it was.
I just hope that, as we go forward with this conversation, that we use some real numbers so that people understand that for most residential customers, we haven't heard any numbers about what the rate increase might be, but we're not talking, I would assume, for most people, about an increase. We're not talking any increase yet, but when we do, it'll be important for us to know whether that's for most people, a dollar a month, or $40 a month, or $100 a month. Instead of talking about percentages, let's try to, as much as we can, talk about real dollars and real effects on people so that we really get a sense of what this is going to cost or not cost us.
We will. We'll portray it that way, absolutely.
Mrs. Steiger, did you say, on the forecast, 2010 total revenues, the 38.3 figure, did you say that incorporates a rate increase?
No, not the 38. This one does, the 40.
The next one, okay.
40 does. And that's minimal. We have really cut back to the extent that, so we are, at this point, this is a very, very basic operating budget. It just essentially operates, you know, at a very basic level. There's no extras in there at all. It's cut back in terms of overtime, contractors, and so on. And so even with that, we still are going to need some kind of increase just to keep us in the positive.
Can I ask one other question? Just because it's in my head, and I think you passed the place where it would have been, you know, appropriate to ask, so I'll ask it now. And this is a little bit off-topic, so I apologize if it's too far astray. I'm wondering whether the cost that we've anticipated to extend the reclaimed water system throughout the city is justified over an alternative of purifying that water to the extent that it could be used to replenish groundwater? Have we done that analysis?
On groundwater recharge, basically, using...
As opposed to trying to repipe the whole city for reclaimed water?
We have not done that analysis. I don't know if one's been done. Peter, are you aware of any analysis like that?
Hi, Peter. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, mayors members of the council. The way we access our groundwater is through groundwater basins that have been adjudicated. And Glendale does not have the ability to increase its extraction simply by adding recharge to the basin. So at this point, we haven't looked at adding recycled water to the basin, simply because the benefit would not be there for us. In the future, there's a contemplated study for the Verdugo Basin, where we may jointly, with other agencies, petition the water master to increase our take if we were successful in recharging recycled water. We have looked at the cost of recycled water versus potable water purchases, and we do plan to bring that to you in a study session to give you an understanding and to give you the ability to make an educated decision whether you would like to proceed with the expansion of the recycle system.
Okay, so at some point, we'll see an analysis of alternatives to expanding the reclaimed water system that would still use the water, but in a different way, by maybe purifying it to a higher level and using it in some other way.
And not for groundwater recharge. Correct.
Okay, that's great. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. So again, just before, I just want to reiterate, because I think it's very important, because we are going to be coming back to you shortly with some additional information on how we expect to achieve this budget next year, okay? Because it does make an assumption that there has to be some kind of increase. But even with that, it's a very, very marginal level of expenditures and revenue. The Public Benefits Fund has been very, very successful. We have, we traditionally have here in Glendale one of the most successful and cost-beneficial programs in the state. And the way we operate it is, some years, we don't use the entire fund, and some years, we draw from past years and use more. So some years, as you can see, you have a negative income, some years, positive, negative. Essentially, the fund, by definition, has to stay at least net zero. It does. So this 1.3 is just drawing on previous years. You can see, we still have a balance in the fund of $3.3 million. But I think the important thing to recognize here is that Glendale is recognized as one of the top five utilities in the entire state when it comes to energy conservation, efficiency, and innovative programs. And it's all because of how we deal with these funds. Plus, in the last year, we've also added a few other programs, including one aimed specifically at low-income programs here in Glendale. The efficiency, back to Ms. Friedman's comment, we, again, you know, I don't want to continue to blow our horn, but we are generally in the top three or four utilities in the state when it comes to energy conservation results and efficiency. And we generally are at least in the 1% to 1.5% per year efficiency reduction totals. And that's what this shows. And you can see, we've been very, very effective over the last number of years, and we continue to be, both for this year and for next year's projected, in terms of what we expect to see in annual energy savings. It is, it does relate to about 1% of our total. Again, this shows the same thing, just in percentage. Most utilities are somewhere between 1.5% and 3.4% of a percent, which is generally what's expected. We're at 1%, and that's a function of our 29 public benefits programs. Most of them aim towards energy efficiency and load management. Okay, on the capital side, the capital program at GWP for the next year, actually, two years, is driven primarily by our Smart Grid project. The Smart Grid project, overall, is roughly a $70 million expenditure, with $20 million coming from the Department of Energy. Just to review, we were the very first utility in the country to sign with the OE for these funds. And we have, for that reason, been given lots of notoriety as a very progressive utility, and I think rightly so. I think so far, we're doing a really good job in this area. But, that's the good news. The bad news is, it's driving our budget. It's driving our capital budget in every aspect, for both electric and water. So just to give you a snapshot on where we've been, and of course, over the last couple of years, we've had other large projects that have, you know, gone in here. Chevy Chase Reservoir, which I'll talk about... Chevy Chase Reservoir, which I'll talk about in a minute, was a very large project, which is in these numbers. We're now doing the Glorietta substation. So there have been other significant projects, but nothing is coming close to Smart Grid. So as you, whoops, not yet. Our preliminary budget for next year on electric services is forty-six million versus thirty-six million this year. And again, that's a direct result of our acceleration of the installation of the AMI meters and meter data management system. Power management actually is fairly flat. That's a function of the fact that, at the moment, we are not putting anything new at Grayson. We're taking a hard look at what we need to do down there in the long haul to bring the efficiencies up. In the meantime, we are maintaining and putting new capital into what we have to make sure that it's a, it's a sound operating unit. So our total electric expenditures in the capital side for next year are about fifty-one million dollars. Water side, the same driver. The driver, again, is Smart Grid, because if you recall, we're also doing all the water meters. So, so for next year, the, the number will be twenty-four million. Most, a good portion of that is Smart Grid. This year, the twenty-five million. Part of that is the closure of the Chevy Chase Reservoir project, yes?
Question.
Yeah, a quick question. As we move forward, hopefully, with waste of energy at Shoal, will that come, be reflected in your capital budget or Public Works?
Anything associated with energy would be in our budget.
But let me add, it'll probably be both, because it'll probably be a unified project of some kind, because the, the gas is, is captured by maintaining the landfill. So it'll probably end up being a combination of GWP and Integrated Waste Fund that'll, that'll be proceeding with the project of whatever it is. Yeah, so you'll probably see it in both.
Okay.
And that, that's out of a number of years. One of the things that we haven't shown here, but I think it, it needs to be mentioned, is, due to the economic conditions and some of the things I've mentioned, you know, lower revenues, and for the moment, it looks like we're going to have lower revenues for the next couple of years, we've had to push out our entire capital budget structure, both on the electric and water side. So a number of the projects that we had in the next five-year window, because recall, our strategic plan is a five-year strategic plan, have now been pushed out beyond that window. One of those is our next unit, whether it's a unit at Grayson, or whether it's something at the Shoal landfill. And it's not to say we're not going to do it, it's just, at the moment, it's not in that five-year plan, because it just doesn't work in terms of a capital expenditure. It doesn't show here, but I just wanted to make that clear. The Utility Operations Center, and I'm going to mention that at the end as, as one of our challenges. You might not think it is, but I'll explain why. But in the meantime, again, we've pushed out any expenditure we expected to do at the Utility Operations Center, that's what's normally known as the yard, beyond our five-year horizon. And the only thing that's now included in there, and that's why you see almost fifteen-million-dollar budget here, but a, only a five-million-dollar expenditure, is anything we have to do for the new exit ramp into the DreamWorks Disney area that impacted the yard. And we had quite a bit of work that we had to do to restructure the yard for parking, walls, a number of things. So that's the only expenditure we're making at that, at this point. So our total capital for GWP for this year is projected at seventy-two million, next year, eighty million. It drops off after that, by the way. Just, if we had a five-year projection, you could see how it drops off. But this, again, is a, a function of Smart Grid. On the power management, you can see generally where we are, and as I mentioned, most of our expenditures are a function of keeping Grayson operating to the maximum efficiency that we can. And so that's what you see here. No major expenditures. This is fairly typical when you own a plant of that size. On the electric side, again, we have, we have really narrowed down what we expect to do over the next five years, and that starts to show in this coming year. There are two major expenditures in, on the electric side. One is the Glorietta substation, which we will finish next year, and the other is Smart Grid. And as you can see, AMI is the Smart Grid piece, and you can see how it affects the electric budget for the next two years. It drops off dramatically after that. Water side, more or less the same story. Again, Smart Grid is the largest single expenditure for next year. This, and for the coming year, what we've had to do, and we, we're looking at some things right now, so some things are still more or less in flux, but given the capital restraints that we have, we are, we are currently developing two new wells in the northern part of the city. We may have to push those out a little bit in order to be able to fit them into our capital expenditure here. So it's something that I think we need to be aware of. Those two wells go to that strategic plan goal of increasing our internal water supply by about a little over three-thousand acre feet. So that's why it's, it's not included in this budget, but we are looking to see how we can make that happen. So this is the water budget. I mentioned the Utility Operations Center, or the yard. Again, this just shows you in a pretty graphic format, the way we've scaled way back in terms of what we're doing, all these here, which is what we expected to be able to do. Our expectation was to build a new training facility. We don't have a training facility at GWP, to put in a new operations center. Our operations center is getting pretty long in the tooth down there, and this doesn't really serve very well, and a new warehouse. We have pushed that out beyond the five-year horizon. We'll, we'll make do with what we have. But this is what we have to do for right now. So let me just quickly go over some of the key projects over the course of the last year. Chevy Chase Reservoir, very successful project. Project budget was thirty-two-point-five million. It came in underneath that at thirty-point-six million. I think a well-run project. The scheduled in-service date of the reservoir, that's key, not of, not of the grass above it, but of the reservoir, was July of two thousand nine. The actual in-service date was July two thousand nine. Again, the project came in under budget and on schedule. However, the overall project completion date, the golf course itself, essentially, was pushed out to two thousand ten for a couple of reasons. First of all, during construction, we've, we've faced a couple of delays, primarily in finding groundwater underneath it that we had to mitigate. And then towards the end, as we restored the golf course, I think it was last November, we had a, a major rainstorm, which unfortunately, right after we put the sod in, wiped out part of the course, so it set us back. So completion date of the course itself was pushed back. But at this point, they're playing golf, there's water in the, in the tank, so everything is working as expected. So a very successful project, and I thank you for, for authorizing that a number of years ago, because it worked well. The Glorietta substation. Here's what it looked like up till a few months ago. Here's what it's going to look like a year from right now. Very, very different. There are a number of reasons we're doing this, but the, the most important reason is to upgrade the transmission level to sixty-nine KV, so that our substations can back up each other, and to allow us to increase distribution voltage in this area to twelve KV, to allow our distribution circuits to back each other up. A major increase in reliability. The benefit, as you can see, is, you can see how ugly this was, and how, how tall it was, and quite obvious in the area. When we're all finished, we're using low-profile construction, which pretty much shields the equipment from the surrounding neighborhood. And it's a vast improvement in how it looks, and it'll be a vast improvement in how it operates, so it's using all modern technology, which this was quite dated. Again, it's a project budget of thirteen-point-one million. Currently, we're on budget. Its, its scheduled completion date is May of two thousand eleven, a year from right now. We are completely on schedule as of right now. We expect it to be in service as of that date. And in fact, it's critical that it is in service, because that's prior to the summer of next year, and summertime is always our most difficult time of year. And then finally, the Smart Grid. Just to quickly review, it's our largest capital project. The estimated cost is about seventy-one million. We got the twenty million from DOE. Our overall estimated project completion is at the end of two thousand fifteen. However, DOE created certain guidelines and requirements for us to accelerate the project, to add additional technology to the project, which we have done. We have added ice storage, so we now have storage that will be the ice bear. You may recall, we have some ice bears throughout the city. We're now going to do this in a very large-scale way. We will be doing distribution automation, which will automate our distribution system to be able to react to outages much quicker and have a much better operating efficiency, and a number of other technological improvements that we had not planned on doing in the early years, we're now doing. The proof-of-concept or demonstration piece of the project is in progress right now. We are, we have just installed a thousand electric meters, five hundred water meters. There'll be three hundred in-home displays that we are giving to customers, so they can see how much electric and water they're using at any given time. And this will basically ring out the system. So by the, by June, we will pretty much know what's working and what isn't working. And we already have a pretty good idea of what's working, and most of it's working. We had a couple of glitches, as you might imagine, in a system like this, but overall, it's doing what we expected to do. So as soon as we finish the proof-of-concept, we will then complete deployment of all eighty-five-thousand electric and thirty-five-thousand water meters.
Can we be, can we be on that list?
Do you, you want to be a Smart Grid person?
At the front of that list, to see what, I'm, I'm serious. I mean, you're, you're asking people to, you're asking for their response and their, you know, thoughts on it, and if it's working properly. And a lot of people ask us, well, why are we doing this? It's a lot of money. What benefits are there to the common user? And, you know, this way, we can, we can look at it.
We can, we'll do that. Yeah, I can't say exactly how it's going to work, and because, as you might imagine, when, as you build this system out, you build it in pieces. But we'll try to build it in pieces that are...
Is that a Brown Act violation, or a FPPC violation?
Brown, it's a brownout violation.
As long as your meters don't all get together and talk to each other, it's okay.
That's right, yeah. Because you know, you know how the, the system does work that way. The meters talk to each other. It's called a mesh system. So you get a number of meters that, that send their, their signals to each other, and then they take a packet of that and then go to a collection point. So they do actually talk to each other.
The beauty, the beauty of that concept is that your neighbors are going to be the first to let you know what they think of the meters.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Well, no, I mean, as you said, this is the largest significant capital expense that, that we've got in the next five years, and it's new, and Department of Energy gave us the grant for it, and let's make sure that it's, inevitably, there will be bugs in the system.
Oh, yeah.
And it's rather, it would be better that we recognize those bugs before others point them out and make us look like we're not, you know, aware of the operations of the system.
Okay.
Mr. Friedman?
Unless you haven't planned to say it already, can you just explain very briefly again, the benefits? We get them, and we can read the meters, but how does the city benefit?
Okay, let me, let me start with the customers. You know, first and foremost, this system is a customer-centric system, with a complete ability of customers to take this information, their information, remember, the usage data is the customer's information in real time, and do with it as they please. Now, upfront, what that really means is taking a look at what you're using right now, either electric or water, and being able to manipulate that. In other words, turn your lights off, if for no other reason. So we expect our customers to be able to save money right upfront by recognizing that, well, hey, I'm using, I'm using energy somewhere in the house, I better go do something, or...
That'll be inside the house?
Yes.
Wherever you want it, in the house?
Yep. Yeah, it'll be a wireless device that we will give to customers, that will tell how much energy and water is being used at any given time, and ultimately, what the cost of that is at any given time. But right upfront, it'll tell you what you're using. On the water side, for example, if there's a leak, or, you know, you've got something on, when your toilet is running or something, and, you know, you wouldn't even, you might not even know about it, but if you look at this device, it'll tell you that. So you'll know right away that you have a leak. The customers will have the most flexibility in this system. We are offering that right upfront, so that they can, they can control appliances, their thermostats. There will be other applications, apps, that will be available, that we're not even aware of yet, that as soon as the system is out, just like you see with the iPad and things like that, there'll be other applications.
That was one of my questions. Is this something that if you're on vacation and something weird happens at your house where no one's supposed to be there, you'll actually...
You'll know it.
You could be notified?
You'll, yep, you'll know it.
And then, can you explain to me, because I'm not the most technological person in the world, how this works with the new appliances that are smart meter-compatible, and what that means?
What it means is this: the new appliances will have a chip in it that communicates through what's known as ZigBee. And I, you know, I bring this to your attention, because you'll hear it many times. ZigBee is the meter equivalent of Bluetooth. ZigBee will talk to any appliance or any application that you have that has a chip in it, that you can either retrofit, or the new appliances have in it, that allow the meters to say, right now is a peak time, so don't, you know, turn off. If you're doing, let's say you have an electric dryer, and the dryer has a chip in it, and you're running at three o'clock in the afternoon in the middle of August, the meter will, will talk to that dryer and say, you know what, turn off the, the element for the next ten minutes, until the, until things go down a little bit. What that'll do is, over time, as we start to put more customer-sensitive rates in there, that'll also reduce the rate that the customer pays by, by doing that. So it's a benefit to the customer, it's a benefit to us, because we, our peak won't be as high. So it'll do things like that. But you'll be able to do that with your thermostat, with appliances, pool pumps, and the other thing that, as we move ahead into a more proliferation of electric vehicles, they will also be able to control when you charge your electric vehicle. Because if everybody comes home at six o'clock at night and plugs their electric vehicle, and our system kind of does that. So what this'll do is this, the meter, the ZigBee system, will actually monitor when the right time is, and then just charge the car.
And just because there's been some concern, I think, in the, you know, amongst people that this is going to be something that GWP is going to start controlling your house, or taking charge of your appliances, your dryer, you're, so you're going to have a person or some computer that's, you know, turning people's dryers off around the city. Can you just, you know, reassure people that this is going to be under their control, that it's just something that's going to give them more power and more information, and hopefully save them money?
It's completely optional. If a customer doesn't want to use the, the system at all, they don't have to do anything. Nothing changes. But if they want to, they can, and they can do it as much or as little as they want. Yes.
Glenn, could you finish answering my question now?
Yes.
You talked about the homeowner.
Yep.
How the city's going to benefit?
The city will benefit in a number of ways. The first thing it will do is, we will understand our distribution system far better than we do today. We will know, you know, what lines are being loaded up, and the system can automatically reroute energy to lines that aren't being loaded up, making it more efficient. It will also know when there are outages, okay? Today, for example, if your lights go out, you call us up and you tell us. In the future, when your lights go out, we'll know immediately. And the system will have the ability to self-heal, to an extent. In other words, instead of a thousand customers being out for an hour, maybe ten customers will be out, and the rest come back automatically, because the system knows where to put it back in. Also, it'll give us an incredible amount of data to be able to design and understand our system far better than we do today. And it will allow us to integrate things like solar, like all the solar panels that our customers now have, you know, they interface with our system through a mechanical meter, not a very effective way of doing it. In the future, the Smart Grid will know exactly when to bring in power from those panels, when to stop it, when to augment, augment it. It's just a whole different way of operating.
So, in summary, in future years, you have cost savings.
But the, there should be significant cost savings, both on our end, as a utility, and for the customer. Yes.
And the rate differentials that you spoke about is something that will go through our public hearing process at such time that we're ready to do that, which may be several years.
Yes, it'll be a while before, you know, we want to wait till we get everything in place, make sure it's working correctly. Yes.
Any other questions on that?
I guess there'll be a lot of other cities across the country coming here.
They already are.
They already are.
Oh, sure, they already, they, you know, we get lots of questions from other cities, all around the country, as to how we're doing it, why we're doing it, how we got twenty million dollars. I don't tell them.
We did Chromium 6 now, and we're on the Smart Meters.
Okay, finally, I'd like to do a little bit of, just to give you a sense of where we sit in the tri-city area. I think this is quite interesting, and very, you know, it's something that unless you see it, you can't appreciate it. Net asset, here's Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena. We obviously have net assets of somewhere in the middle of these three cities. The number of customers, we have the most customers. So logically, you would think, well, if you have the most customers, you probably should have the most revenue. That's not the case at all, as you can see. Here, and I'm going to compare us primarily to Burbank, because I think this really makes the point. We have eighty... We have 85,000 electric customers, they have 51,000 electric customers. Their revenues are 287 million, ours are 208, and this is from CAFER. The reason being, as I mentioned, we are primarily residential, and we really don't have a, an industrial base. Burbank, on the other hand, is far less residential and has far more very, very large users, like the studios and so on. That makes a huge difference when it comes to revenues, as you can see. So it's not always apparent, when you look at, you know, the size of a, of a city, to say, oh, you know, one utility should have more revenue than the other. And the, so you can see how we, how we compare here, we have more customers than either Burbank or Pasadena, but proportionally, we certainly don't have more revenue by any means.
When Disney comes on full force, that, should that have a fairly significant?
It's about another four, four or five megawatts, I believe it is. So it will, yeah, it will, so it will add, yes, it will add about, I don't know what the revenue will be, we'll have to see what that looks like.
It'll show a little jump.
The key would be what happens in the next 20 years with complete build-out.
Right.
When you get to where there's, there's potentially 6 million square feet of development space there and upwards of 6,000 or 8,000 employees, that's when you'll see the difference over the next 20-year timeframe.
Yeah.
And in order to serve them, it means we have to upgrade our Grandview substation. We've already looked at this, so that...
Yeah, pitch for Grandview.
Well, yeah, just, just set it up. It's, it's out there. It's a good thing, though.
Mr. Quintero.
Burbank obviously has more manufacturing. How about Pasadena? Is it the bigger commercial?
Large institutions.
Large institutions.
Very large, yes. And that does make a difference, and generally, what you find is more of a balance like that. We are, as I said in that, that's why I wanted to show you earlier, how we're skewed to the residential side here. So our net incomes, you know, aren't all that much different. After you get past the transfer, though, you can see that the net, that does make a difference, and that, again, having those large customers really does help bolster up net income. So I think this is a good comparison of our, of the three cities when it comes to electric utility operations. Again, I wanted to quickly just highlight the benefits of having a municipal utility. Sometimes we forget why we're here, and there's a lot of reasons why we're here, and I just quickly go over that. The first and foremost is the general fund support, which we give, whereas the profit on an IOU goes to their shareholders. You approve our rates, just as you said, you know, you have complete control over what our rates will be. The CPUC controls the investor-owned rates. Both of us pay utility users' tax, both of us have public benefits charges, both of us have state utility surcharge. We, on the other hand, are fully responsible for the operations and costs of streetlights, of the operation, from an electric standpoint, of the traffic signals. We have our own public notification system, which, as I mentioned earlier, is a benefit to the city. The city uses it, and it's a mutually beneficial. We have, we now have a public complaint hotline, which, again, is mutually beneficial between GWP and the city. Enhanced city infrastructure, and I think the most obvious and most recent example of an enhanced city infrastructure is the fact that our smart grid is now creating the need to enhance and improve a number of information system technologies for the city, which, which we help to enhance, we help to fund in some cases, and again, it's mutually beneficial. We, we do some technological improvements that go into the city and vice versa. So this is something that I think is, we don't talk about a whole lot, but it's obviously a nice benefit to have. And then, of course, we do all the billing of all the city services, which you can see is a big, big gap between what we do here and the benefits to what we do versus what an investor-owned would do.
Mr. Quintero. Other questions? I just, earlier in the morning, I saw a couple of PG&E-sponsored commercials for the PG&E-sponsored proposition. How do you think that, I mean, they're on 24/7 with no response from municipal utilities allowed. How do you think that would impact our GWP?
If it passes? Assuming that proposition passes, it could have an impact on GWP in a couple of ways. There are still electric customers in Glendale that are not served by GWP. That would greatly, well, that would directly impact our ability to serve those in the future. However, there is a possibility that our ability to serve new customers would also be subject to the same regulations that would be promulgated by that proposition. So it could mean that if a new, a new customer, like a Disney, came in, we would have to have a two-thirds vote of the citizens of Glendale in order to serve them. That's, so yes, it could have a major impact. Let me, let me go to, to how we look at our customer base, because this is going to lead right into the quick comparison of our rates, because rates are always a question, GWP, and I'd like to show this. I think it's very, very important. As I mentioned, we are primarily residential, so we're looking at the residential customer base. The biggest single segment of our residential customer base are customers that use between 200 and 500 kilowatt-hours per month. So if you take 0 to 500 kilowatt-hours per month, that is the, by far, the majority of our customers are in that category. And then it drops off substantially after that. So I think so, keep that in mind. So based on that, we performed a rate, direct rate comparison using that price for 500 kilowatt-hours per month, and we compared ourselves with Anaheim, Los Angeles, Burbank, Edison, Pasadena, and Riverside. We fall right in the middle. In fact, we actually fall slightly below average. So for our average customer, in the classification where we have most of our residential customers, we are actually below average. So, and there are a number of reasons for that, and as I mentioned, we've made great strides in the last year to stabilize and actually reduce rates. That's helped, that's not all of it. And clearly, you know, we're not the lowest, but at this point, we're also not the highest. I think that's very, very important to understand where we are.
Does that number include all costs, including the fuel surcharge?
That's everything, yes. It's all in, mhm, yep. On the water side, we look to Burbank, Pasadena, Chrysena Valley in LA. And again, you can see where we stand here, we're right here, we're, we're above Burbank and Pasadena, below Chrysena and LA. And again, we're below average. And this, the 1,900 cubic feet per month, that is now our average customer. Interestingly, if I'd come to you a year ago, that number was higher because, again, people have concern. So what we did is we compared 1,900 HCF per month, so it was equal, and this is what we came up with. So our, our water rates are actually below average. And again, here in, in graphic form, you can see this, you can see where we stand in conjunction with our other neighbors. So far, we're, we're doing what we said we would do with the strategic plan on the water side, and on the electric side, we're making progress. We talked about the possibility of doing something on the water side to keep our financial integrity. And just to give you a sense of what's going on, Met will be increasing their rates 15% over the next two years. They just voted in a seven and a half rate increase for this year. And our neighbors, looking at our neighbors, effective July 1st, Burbank is putting in a 13.5% increase, Pasadena 5.1, and LA a 2.6. Chrysena is on a yearly basis, and their next increase will be as of January 1st. So we talked about that, and we will be coming back to you with more numbers and beyond that. And finally, I appreciate your indulgence, I know this has been a long discussion, but I think, you know, there's a lot of information here. I want to just talk for a minute about what our future challenges are. Clearly, keeping our rates, whether we, whether we achieve 35% for local Edison or not, we may. But the real issue here is keeping our rates as low as we can and close to average as we possibly can, and, and keeping a healthy distance between ourselves and Edison. And while people have asked, why are we comparing ourselves to Edison? Because traditionally, public power has always compared itself to its, to the local investor-owned utility, because that's why we're public power and not investor-owned utilities. So that's, that's a very valid comparison. So this is going to be a large challenge as we move forward, given the fact that the economy is down, usage is down, weather changes are clear, and so it changes the paradigm that we've had to look at in terms of creating our projections and our revenue. So this will be a, a major issue for us. Increasing Grayson's efficiency, I talked a little bit about that already. We are, we are just about finished with a fairly substantial analysis of what that looks like. The good news is, we're starting to coalesce around a couple of possibilities, one being the Shoal Canyon facility, something else down at Grayson. But regardless of what we do, the capital in order to do that is going to be a challenge because for the next three or four years, until the economy should get better, we are not going to have lots of access to capital from our own revenue. So that's, that's a, a challenge for us. The smart grid is a challenge only to the extent that we have an accelerated schedule, and we're sticking with it, and we expect lots of additional enhancements to that as we move forward. This is the transition to a new way of operating for electric and water utilities, there's no question. So we are just at the beginning of it. So over the next few years, we'll come back to you and say, well, the next piece of smart grid looks like this, and this is what we think we should do. So as I say, this is just the beginning. And power supply is always an issue with us. The good news, as I've mentioned, just to reiterate, is we are in very, very good shape with renewables, and in fact, we've been able to leverage that to get additional revenue into GWP and still be able to have additional options as we move forward. But as always, looking forward and recognizing that we're going to have to mitigate some of our coal purchases in the long term with, with other non-greenhouse gas emission type of units will be a challenge for us, and how we pay for that will be a challenge. On the water side, the expansion of our potable sources, we, as I mentioned, you know, we've been doing that, we're going to have to slow down a little bit because, again, of the capital issues that I've just explained, and that we're not going to stop, but we are going to have to take a, a hard look at it. The recycled water project, we have the five-year plan that shows exactly how we will do it. The issue isn't how we will do it, it's how we will pay for it, assuming that that's the direction we want to go in. We'll be bringing that back to you momentarily to decide what direction we should go in. But that will be a challenge for all of us to decide how we want to handle that. Sustainable conservation, everyone now is under 10% mandatory water restrictions. The, the reality of the situation with water in California is, there isn't any more. And so for us to say that we will get back to business as usual next year or this year is really, really not prudent. The, the reality of it is, we will probably always be using less water because we have to. So the fact that we've asked people to use less in certain ways is going to be the norm as we move ahead. So we're going to have to find better and more efficient ways to use our water or not use it, as the case may be. So big, big issue for us in terms of sustainable conservation. And then finally, asset management actually goes to both electric and water. It's a big issue for us. Smart grid will help us with that quite a bit, but it's not the only way to manage assets. So as we, as we move down the road a little bit, we're going to be coming back to you, talk a little bit more about what asset management means to us in the long term and why it's so important. But for the moment, we'll be using the, the data from our smart grid to help us with that. And then some of the common issues that we see, budgetary compliance. If I didn't make it clear, I'll make it clear again, that, you know, we are, we are very, very budget constrained at this moment. We are running a utility that is in the positive, and we expect it to be that way. But it, but we're doing it by cutting back in many of the areas that we've, over the years, looked to move forward in, and now we're going to bring it back a little bit. So to continue a healthy budget will be a challenge for us. We think we can do it, we've got a plan in place, but it, it changes a little bit of what we've said we're going to do. Regulatory compliance, the biggest single issue here is AB 32, and depending upon what happens with cap and trade, that could have a significant impact on our rates. In fact, if cap and trade is put in place, and we'll know shortly, we could actually see rate increases on the electric side of 15 to 30% just for cap and trade. So, you know, and that's just one of our regulatory issues. There are, there are a number of them. We are, you know, most utilities are struggling these days to get to a point where they can comply with renewables. That's one area, as I mentioned, that we are ahead of the game. UOC efficiency, I mentioned earlier that we've pushed back all of our plans at the UOC, and we'll make it work. But the bottom line is, over time, we are going to need to, to make the yard, the UOC, a more efficient place to work, given how we operate today. It's not the most efficient place, and we do need to have a training, at a minimum, we do need a training facility. Most utilities have those, we don't have one. And finally, a long-term issue for us and any utility today, but particularly us because we're headlong into smart grid, is the transition of our workforce from what we have today to what we're going to need tomorrow to operate in a different world of smart grid and a whole different way of operating, both on the electric and water side. In addition to that, our workforce is aging, as we've talked about in the past, and we need a whole different type of workforce to come in. And we've, we've actually started down the road, you recall the fact that we've put together the Verdugo Power Academy to address some of those issues. That's just the beginning. We need to retrain a number of our workers to understand how to operate in a new working paradigm, and it's just going to continue. So this is a big issue for us, workforce transition. We think we're up for the task, but it's going to change how things operate with us.
Thank you. I have one speaker card. Before I go there, would anyone like to pose any questions that they haven't asked yet?
After.
Okay. Mr. Milano?
Mr. Najarian, we just finished hearing a 90 minutes worth of presentation. I was wondering if I, if you could be a little bit flexible with my time. I'll try to be efficient and, and to the point, but just in case I run over my five minutes, I would appreciate some flexibility.
I was going to give you first three, but then I realized it was a 90-minute presentation, so I'm up to five.
I'll try to stay within five, but I think I'll make your time worthwhile here. My, my name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. I'd like to present some observations on the Glendale Water and Power. And I've spent several years looking at these documents and seeing the operations, and I think that you might find some of these comments beneficial. I'll start on a light note, I don't know if anyone knows, that 20% of all of the energy used in California is used to produce and deliver water. That's kind of an interesting thing for you to know. I would like to see in the future perhaps a little bit better outreach so that we can engage more of the utility customers or the people who are interested in the budget to be present. I want to say the following, that I've made copies of the budget, the last budget, and handed it to you, and it includes three pages. One page is the summary of appropriations by department, followed by a summary of appropriations by department by fund, which I think is an excellent improvement over the previous budgets that we've had. It's a very nice, beautiful document in my mind. And then we have the information, again, with regard to the police force. It is my hope that you could take this information and request that it be given to you in actuals with at least a 10-year trend so that you can see at a glance what is happening to each one of those departments, and preferably even with a graph, so that visually you can say, you know, what is happening to the particular cost by department. So in the case that you have to cut, you know where to cut. So let me go on with the Glendale Water and Power. The, what is good about this presentation that you received today is that we have not only the dollar amounts, but we also have performance and usage reports, which I think is excellent for a budget presentation. You have trends, but you don't have, in my opinion, sufficient trends. So you have trends of the last couple of years, but it would be really nice to visit trends in the last 10 because you would really highlight some things that I'll bring up in the future. My suggestion is that you have some of this information available to you in the comprehensive annual financial report in the statistical section. There you have eight years of some of this key performance for the Glendale Water and Power included, the number of kilowatts sold and for the past eight years, you have revenues by, by category. So my suggestion is that you look at that and, and compare it to what you've seen today to get a more comprehensive view of this thing. I also love to see those reports in a 10-year graphic format. So you have a presentation where you're presented with the fact that the Glendale Water and Power is progressive, reliable, and the financial health is in good condition. But what goals can you set from this information? Well, the mission statement says that it's going to be a caring and cost-effective utility. So what is... So what does that mean to be caring? Well, you need to have a definition of it. Caring, I would say that it would have lowest rates possible, and my suggestion is that you use a relative comparison to other utilities that are similar. So compare our rates to Burbank, Pasadena, and LA. All of them belong to the Southern California Association of Utilities, of public utilities, and I think that that's a better measure than trying to measure against a utility that has some very heavy overhead, like major nuclear power plants and the decommissioning costs. It is more relative to measure and say, a goal would be the lowest utility of these four. That to me is a definitive goal that says we care about the customer. Again, the rates are also there in the statistical section of the CAFRA. So you can look at the numbers that were presented to you versus the numbers that finance gave you, which basically gives you your rate by residential, commercial, wholesale, and so forth. This is a caring utility. Well, we are paying a 7% tax, and we're transferring 11% to the general fund, which are used for general purposes. At the end of the day, that is a tax. So we basically are working on an 18% tax to the customer. It's an effective rate, and there is no way that you can tell me that it isn't, because that money is going for the general expenses of the city. So is it a caring utility? You have to look at it and define it in some way that you can measure. Cost-effective, I would like to see, to define cost-effectiveness, to use some basic cost accounting concepts. For example, what is the cost of operation of this utility for the production of one acre feet of water? And see those costs for the last 10 years. In the case of electricity, I would like to see what the cost of operations are of producing electricity at 100 megawatts consistently. So you have a set measure, and you measure year to year, now you get an idea, are they really being cost-effective? Are they not being cost-effective? The same thing with regard to the distribution costs. Now, with regard to the questions that I'd like to suggest, it's the following. Why are wholesale revenues so low compared to what they used to be back in 2001, 2002? Burbank has greater wholesale rates, I mean, has sales revenues, so does Burbank. Why doesn't Glendale? My guess is there may be possibility that our rates are too high, therefore they cannot sell those wholesale rates. How can we increase customer satisfaction? How can we reduce our costs? How can we increase our revenue so that it doesn't impact the customer who's going to try to conserve? How can we improve conservation? How can we encourage it? How can we reduce our carbon footprint? How can we set customer rates that are aligned with all the other goals that were set out over here? Remember, we have residential, but 70% of that residential is multifamily, 30% is single-family. So when you're measuring, you have to take a look at the type of residences that you have. And what's going to be the cost benefit once we implement some of these new technologies? Let me have one more minute.
I'll give you one minute.
Thank you.
Council is feeling generous, Mr. Milano.
Thank you very much, I truly appreciate it. With regard to capital improvement, my question to you is this, what if you were to get a year-to-year aging, going back the last 20 years perhaps, with regard to the infrastructure needs? For example, water mains, reservoirs, pumps, valves, and meters. Because if you were to do that and get the aging, and you realize that a lot of your infrastructure is incredibly old, you would know what your backlog is of the capital improvements that need to be done. Otherwise, you cannot see it from these documents. You don't know how big your backlog is, and you need to be able to appropriate every year an adequate amount for those capital improvements. Then with regard to Proposition 16, I would have a question. Do the residents in the Adianx who use Edison, do they pay less for their per kilowatt hour than Glendale residents? I don't know the answer, but I think that it's worthwhile looking into that. One last thing regarding rates according to usage, 1,900 cubic feet of per month of usage average that it was quoted here comes out to 465 gallons per day. That's a huge amount of water as an average residential usage. 465 gallons per day. In my apartment building, my residents use less than 200 gallons per day. So I think that the city council needs to make a decision with regard to what are the objectives for both your rates and the usage that you would expect. If you live in a multifamily housing, how much do you expect the usage to be in terms of water and electricity? 10 kilowatt hours per day in electricity perhaps, 200 gallons per day? Because that is going to give you the guidelines, so that as rates start increasing, it is my hope that those individuals who conserve, who truly conserve, have a truly lower rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
For Mr. Steiger. Do you know your age of year, different components of the infrastructure in water and power, which ones will be coming up for renewal, I mean, for replacement, et cetera? Do you have a handle on that?
I assume you're talking primarily of the generation units or just in general?
Generation, valves out in the water.
Yes.
We've had some blowups, and I was told that you have a goal of replacing those old, so you can automate valves to turn on and shut off from inside.
We do, yes. We do have a schedule of when things need to be replaced, whether it's water system, electric system, generation, yes.
Figured you would. Other question, I was wondering, theoretically, we, the West Coast states have an enormous supply of water, but it's the delivery, the technology and the delivery of desalination. Have you heard of anything on the horizon that would indicate that technology is getting to the point where it'll be more economical to put desalination plants off the coast and deliver it inland?
The cost of D-SAL is coming down, there's no question. It's dropped substantially over the last few years, and we are seeing more agencies looking to do some of that. It's still not anywhere close to being economically viable based on what our costs are today for what we have. But the costs are coming down, and most likely at some point in the future, that may be 10 or 20 years from now, there probably will be a time when the costs and the lack of water.
Will reach a.
Yeah, will reach it, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, just a few comments. First, I want to thank Mr. Steiger and his department for a really excellent presentation, very illuminating. I'm very relieved to see that we are ahead of our target for the renewable portfolio, which is, of course, regulated and something that I think a lot of utilities are going to run into problems meeting. And secondly, that our, to see the comparison with other cities and to see once and for all that our rates are not the highest in the state and that we are actually quite in the middle of our surrounding communities and pretty much average. One comment about Mr. Milano, and he raises a number of very good points, but I would take issue with the suggestion that being the lowest, that keeping our rates low is our, should be our number-one concern. And maybe I misheard him, but absolutely keeping rates low is very important, but having a reliable system is very important, too. And I'm glad that we're not the city that has exploding water mains going on in the left and right and in the media at all times, and people's homes being flooded and water service interrupted and all of that. And I do have a question for staff regarding the transfers, because that's a very contentious issue here and in Los Angeles. Am I correct in that the transfers are required by our charter?
The transfer of 25% of the retail revenues of GWP is required by the city charter, required. You take an action each year to reduce from the required amount to the number that's approximately 10% of retail each year as part of your budget actions.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear so that the public understands that this transfer is something that was envisioned when this utility was first set up. It was supposed to be and still is the payback to the people to supporting the utility is that it also, as we sell power to other places, that that benefit goes, that money, that revenue goes into benefiting the people of Glendale through a transfer to the general fund. So I just wanted to, for people that are listening at home, to make that clear. So thanks again for a really excellent presentation.
Thank you. And I did try to show the overall value of having a municipal utility like GWP to the city, that it's more than just low rates, it's a whole series of benefits to the city.
Mr. Quintero.
I also want to thank you, Mr. Steiger, and your staff, since I know that you didn't prepare, I didn't prepare the entire presentation. You all did a wonderful job. It was an excellent 90-minute presentation. Quite frankly, it didn't feel like 90 minutes. And I hope you really have a chance to do this same presentation to some of the civic organizations in the city, and well into the public, the public at large, if they may not be interested in 90 minutes, half hour, 40 minutes, whatever it is. I mean, this is really comprehensive and tells the whole story, puts everything in the proper perspective. So you just did a wonderful job. This is, quite frankly, the first year that, I mean, I think you really have outdone yourselves this year. You've done this in the past, but this is really, really excellent. And then I think you're also doing a great job. I mean, when you think about, this is the first municipal utility in the nation to go forward with this Smart Grid program, and to do it in such a timely fashion, I don't know why. I assume it would be 18 months, 24 months, but we're really, we're really getting through it quickly, so I'm very happy that we have that distinction and that you're, all of the planning that you've done and the operations are coming to, are coming to bear on this program. And then finally, we continue to do a great job with renewable energy. We've been at it for years now, and we're always in the top tier, so congratulations on that also.
Thank you, and I agree. I appreciate and I thank our staff who did a very comprehensive job of putting this together. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Steiger, a good department, served by a good leader, and that's you. You've been, I think, a remarkable breath of fresh air since you've come to this city. And this report, I think, is the best I've heard since I've been here, in the short time I've been here, and I thank you for that. I echo Mr. Quintero's comments. You should take this on the road, I think we should, in a more truncated version. And not just to, not just to toot our own horn about the renewables and those things, but also to be able to address questions that people do have out there about Smart Grid and so on, and our rates, and so on, at a time when these numbers are really on everyone's mind. I'm wondering whether you're going to retrofit all of our GWP vehicles with the slogan, Zigbee is listening. If not, maybe you can consider it, I'll email that to you. But thank you and thank your department for continuing to innovate and for continuing to stick to a path that you and your department have laid out with regard to the five-year strategic plan. When you rolled that out, that was a remarkable presentation, and I'm glad to see that we are sticking to that and have had some successes in remaining true to that and in other areas we're working hard to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Weaver.
Just to add one thing, Glenn, it is one of the best reports I've received, especially from Water and Power, department that seems to be under more attack from the public than other departments. Taking nothing away from any other departments, but the Water and Power budget and everything you do, I believe is much more complex, there's more features to it. It just took you 90 minutes to lay it all out for us, but people understand that. The only thing I pray for is when the smart meter is in my house, in the hot summer with the air conditioning running, and I'm watching SC play Notre Dame on my large-screen TV, that the doggone chip doesn't turn the TV on. I'm squelching it.
Don't put a chip in your TV.
That's not fair. Go away, man.
Mr. Freeman.
Oh, I do have one thing to add. You remind me, Mr. Weaver, instead of now, at GWP, we'll have my people call your people, it'll be we'll have your toaster call my microwave.
My meter will call your meter.
A very well-done report on a very technical subject with many ins and outs, both water, electric, supply, purchase, delivery, et cetera. So I'm very happy about that. You know, I was very, very frustrated last year during crazy season, the campaign season, when certain uninformed candidates attempted to make the delivery of power and water to our community, such a political issue. I think there was a protest right out here, if I'm not mistaken, with some very uninformed people. I'm hoping that this, that this guide, I mean, it's entitled a budget session handout, but will be made available to everyone that's interested in looking at the true issues facing the department and the community, and that such a circus is avoided this next election cycle. So, you know, discussions, clearly there's room for discussion on setting policies, on setting rates, on setting capital improvement goals, and I think we touched on, you touched on almost all of them, and I think we all had some questions for you at this point. So I'm happy that we're able to discuss those issues in a dignified manner without having to wave posters in front of TV cameras or video cameras. And perhaps some of the comments by Mr. Milano regarding a greater next iteration of this, if we can get a better historical perspective, certainly I think that information's available and just give us a better snapshot of where we are, where we're going. And this is something we'll be discussing as a council as the new smart meters are put in, as we have additional renewable energy sources made available, as we decide how we're going to do energy generation at Shoal Canyon. So it's a great, great starting point, I think it does put everything in perspective. So I appreciate this. It's too bad we didn't have this about a year ago. I think it would have really put a damper on a lot of the anxiety that was built up in the community by certain people.
Mr. Weaver.
Question, Sturbridge. This and the other presentation, we've had the budget study sessions, are they or can they be put on the Glendale website, so people want to look at them, they can?
Of course, these meetings are all archived, and so people can easily access them.
That's right, they could see it. Can they actually pull up the document themselves if they want?
No, but we can do that. We can put this presentation, other PowerPoints, on our website.
So they could either watch it.
Sure.
Or they could, they're on copy.
I think that's an excellent idea. What about, what would you all think about having the rate comparison chart beyond GWP's website, so that people who want to know where our rates stand in comparison to surrounding cities could just go and look?
That would be, it would be on the video if they saw it.
But I mean, just right on GWP's website, so if a customer was curious.
But the only thing I get.
So that if a viewer, or, excuse me, a visitor to our GWP website wanted to click on a link that said, "Where do we stand or how do we rate?", that information is directly available.
You can easily do that.
The only thing, if you want to compare our own history, so many departments have reconfigured or their mission has changed over the decades, so you ought to be careful when you're comparing apples and oranges, not so much for your department, but some of the others. Well, this department took on this mission, wasn't there before.
I'm talking about specifically GWP.
Yeah. But I was mentioning the other, if we start to put on trends, looking back, like we hired additional police, if you look, cost before and cost after, they're different. You have to be comparing the same items at the same time. That's all I'm concerned about, even in your department.
Yep, I understand.
Any other comments?
Well, just that the slides should have some explanation also, because otherwise it doesn't.
Of course.
Some kind of verbiage to give the reader an idea of what.
We can do that. We actually have verbiage that goes along with this. I didn't refer to it much today, but we have it.
That'd have been six o'clock.
Excuse me, now I'm feeling sort of slighted. Where are you, where are we storing, which yard are we storing all the extra verbiage?
Glenn wasn't out of verbiage yet, he had more verbiage.
I have the verbiage today, but it's in my version. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I appreciate you taking the, I know it was an extraordinary amount of time, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
There's no other comments?
Move where you're adjourned.
Thank you for your time.
Second, we're adjourned.